And good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 7th, 2010 meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mr. Kasakian, may we have the roll call?
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Uh, Councilmember Weaver, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Please join with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. The Saturday, September 11th, marks the anniversary of the terrible acts of terrorism inflicted upon this country nine years ago. This weekend, as our nation pauses to remember, this date has a turning point in our nation's history, an event that has defined a generation of Americans. Let us also pause and pray for the memory of those who we lost in the attacks, the men and women who perished in their heroic attempts to save survivors, and the many who still walk amongst us scarred by this tragedy. Let us pray that as time passes their wounds heal and our nation's wounds heal. We pray for the world where we may live free of terror and murder and the emotions that lead to such violence. We pray that we are given the strength to live better lives and fill the world with more love than there is hate to go around. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the September 7th, 2010, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, September 2nd, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. The next item, please.
At 3:00, under Presentation of Appointments, is 3A, Agenda Preview for the Meetings of September 14th, 2010.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority for September 14th, there are no business agenda items. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, we have two items, Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding the status of citywide brand by North Star Destination Strategies. And secondly, Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing, this is a change order to professional services agreement. Uh, that evening for the Glendale City Council meeting at 6:00 PM, uh, we have a number of consent items. Fire Chief, this is authorization for destruction of records for Verdugo Fire Communications Center. The City Clerk, legal advertising contract for the City of Glendale. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is bidding results for the furnishing and delivery of seventy-two-and-a-half KV circuit switchers for replacement. Under Adoption of Ordinances, we have an ordinance providing for salary supplement and continuation of certain benefits for city employees who are members of the National Guard or Armed Forces Reserves and are called to active duty. And we have an action item, Director of Public Works, this is pavement management program and the results of the most recent citywide pavement condition survey completed by Omnus Incorporated. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
3B is a proclamation designating September 27th, 2010, as Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children.
Thank you. And is there someone here to accept this proclamation? A.
With their family.
Are there any volunteers?
With their families.
Yes. Having dinner.
Margaret, why don't you come up and accept this, please, if you don't mind?
My children are wrong. But they're fine.
We'll have dinner with them.
And here is the proclamation. Whereas the use of illegal and prescription drugs and the abuse of alcohol and nicotine constitutes the greatest threats to the well-being of Americans' children. I think that's a typo. And whereas fourteen years of surveys conducted by the National Center on Addiction and Substance Abuse at Columbia University have consistently found that the more often children and teenagers eat dinner with their families, the less likely they are to smoke, drink, and use illegal drugs. And whereas frequent family dining is associated with lower rates of teen smoking, drinking, illegal drug use, and prescription drug abuse, and whereas the correlation between frequent family dinners and reduced risk for teen substance abuse are well documented, and whereas parents who are engaged in their children's lives through such activities as frequent family dinners are less likely to have children who abuse substances, whereas family dinners have long constituted a substantial pillar of family life in America, now therefore I, Arun Ajarian, hereby proclaim September 27th, 2010, as Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children, and urge all citizens to recognize the importance of family dinners and to make it a priority in your family.
Hey.
Thank you, Margaret. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. I have, uh, my name is Margaret Hammond, and I do believe that it's great for families to have dinner together. My family, as poor as we were and didn't have a lot to eat really, a lot of evenings, but my mother insisted that that was a very important time that we share with each other and our parents. And my dad sometimes came late due to stopping along the way, have a few, but nevertheless, we waited for him. I'm telling the truth, being me. We waited for him, and it was very important, and it was wonderful to share our dinners with him. And he would tell us wonderful stories of his childhood, and we would listen to him and all. And it was great, and we all grew up with that feeling that it was really important. And those times that we shared our days and told of our things that happened at school were really important, and I do believe it is important for families to have dinner together. Uh, no matter how small or how, you know, poor you may be, it's really a good idea. I think it really serves to keep families together, myself. Thank you.
Very impressive, Margaret. It sounded like you were ready for this.
No, I wasn't.
Very good, impromptu.
When I read it, I thought, yeah, that's a good idea. Great.
Thank you, Margaret. Thanks for being a good sport. Mr. Starbird.
Well, I was going to say, you have to watch out for these traditions. My children are thirty and thirty-five, and they're still eating at my house. And I wanted to make sure we got the proclamation back from Margaret so we made sure it gets where it should go.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Mr. Draymond? Yes. Mr. Draymond?
Just a quick, uh, a quick request, uh, Mr. Mayor. I guess my request is actually of the City Clerk, but, um, there are two nominations that I need to make. Uh, one for, uh, a replacement for Roy Cohen. Roy Cohen. Yeah, boy, we need a replacement for him. He's been gone quite a long time, hasn't he? Yeah. Roy Coleman, excuse me, uh, the Civil Service Commission. And the other, um, Laura Pillsbury, the Commissioner of the Status for Women. Linda. Linda Pillsbury. Thank you.
We'll put those up. Those will be coming back.
Yes, so if we could actually make a request, uh, just to update the file. Thank you, and hopefully I have all the wrong names out of my head now, uh, and thank you, Mayor Stevenson.
Thank you. Any other comments? Staff, Mr. Kasakian?
I just have something that was on my mind from last week. I made a mistake last week in saying that the movie Gung Ho, made in 1943, was starring John Wayne, was actually starring Robert Mitchum and a few other people. Mr. Wayne was approached to star in Gung Ho in 1943, but I think he was working on another movie, Hellcats. I watched a lot of war movies growing up as a kid. Channel 5 used to always have The Guns of Navarone and The Great Escape and all those others, back to back to back.
I'm very glad you cleared that up. I was, you know, I was worried about that one.
Something was bothering me.
Yeah, something was just bothering me.
Didn't sound right.
Something didn't feel right about John Wayne in the movie Gung Ho, but...
All right, thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Next item is Consent Calendar. Consent items including minutes of following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Uh, I would like to pull 5D.
Mr. Mayor.
Or motion for any other item.
I'll read the remainder of the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
5D is Director of Public Works regarding Orange Line Development Authority Second Amended Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement. At B1 is a resolution approving the Second Amended Orange Line Development Authority Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement.
Uh, okay, so here's my concern on that. I know we have Mr. Quintero doing a yeoman's job on this Orange Line Development Authority, seeking to, uh, develop a high-speed rail, uh, route through LA County. Um, but the thing that concerns me, quite frankly, are the, uh, the other members of this authority and their, uh...
Problems.
Oh, let's, let's say some of the issues that they've been having. I'm referring to the City of Bell, uh, and I presume that there's a council member from that city there, and I'm not sure if their city manager had any involvement with this organization. Uh, the City of, uh, Maywood, uh, the City of Southgate, the City of Vernon. These are some cities that have had their challenges in the past. And one of the things we're doing, um, in the Second Amendment, they're changing their bylaws apparently, is to open it up for other agencies to become non-voting members. That's fine with me. Uh, the other is to redefine their role and to eliminate the MAG Lev, um, reference, and that's fine with me. But the, um, one of the other things they're doing is leaving open the compensation per meeting. Uh, it used to be a hundred dollars per meeting stipend. I was fine with that. Uh, I'm even fine, at a hundred dollars, that's what MetroLink Board pays. A hundred fifty dollars a meeting is what MTA pays. But as I read this, they're eliminating the, the actual, um, uh, specification of the, of the stipend, and they're leaving it open to the Board to decide. And I'm concerned that, um, Mr. Quintero, in all his, uh, conservative wisdom and goodness, might get, uh, might get outvoted. I think it's unlikely that would occur, but it does raise some concern, and we can't sit here on the dais as we have week after week in public and private and chastise, uh, the City of Bell and other cities for their indiscretions and leave something like this open, uh, and turning it basically back over to, to those individuals. So I would, um, I mean, I would feel much more comfortable if we... What can we do, Mr. Howard? I mean, I, I want to set a, I want to set a fee certain for this. I don't want the Bell, Vernon, Maywood gang to, to put in, you know, five hundred dollars a meeting, and then they're going to say, well, City of Glendale, you're part of this too.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, certainly I think your concerns about unlimited stipends is, is legitimate and, and well-founded. The language in 4.2B of the proposed Second Amendment or restated JPA will, it virtually tracks provisions of the government code to allow for expenses that are actually incurred to be reimbursed pursuant to a defined policy adopted by the Board. So the only thing that's left to the Board's discretion is to adopt a policy for reimbursement of expenses that have been actually incurred. That type of language, again, somewhat tracks the government code provisions for reimbursing agencies for expenses that are actually incurred. The way that's been interpreted by myself and other city attorneys is that a member of a Board that is subject to language like this has to submit a receipt for expenses that have been incurred in the course and scope of providing services for that Board or Committee, Commission, in this case, JPA. So they've actually eliminated the up to one hundred dollar meeting stipend, or actually proposed to eliminate it.
I, you know, I don't think that's very clear. Um, I see the part where it says, uh, each director and alternate, each director and alternate director shall be reimbursed for reasonable unnecessary expenses actually incurred. That's fine, but it does say that all directors shall receive a stipend per meeting attended as the member's voting representative upon a vote of the Board to authorize such stipends. So I think that leaves it open if they decide, uh, that they want to, you know, make up for lost time.
If the, if the council has a concern, my suggestion would be to hold approval of this matter over, instruct us to get in touch with the Orange Line Authority Executive Director and folks, and register our concerns, and perhaps request that they eliminate any stipend or set it in stone once again, whether it's up to a hundred dollars or twenty-five dollars.
In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow, and I can bring that up because I also didn't pick up on, uh, I mean, there hasn't been any talk that it's going to be anything other than, than the one hundred, but, uh, be happy to mention it tomorrow so we can do whatever we need to do to amend it.
Hold it over again.
The council feel more comfortable if they nailed that down to a certain...
Hold it over.
But let me suggest, then, we take this off calendar until we hear back on this matter from the...
Very good. There's no objection. Uh, Mr. Draymond?
No, no objection. I do have a question.
Yes.
Uh, my question also with this is, not with this, but I mean the Orange Line. Mr. Quintero's our representative. Who is our alternate currently?
Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Weaver is. Okay. Thank you.
I've received no stipend whatsoever, ever. Frank attends every single meeting religiously.
Oh, I see.
Well, I've been elected vice, vice chair, so I have to, I have to be there. Um, and let me say that, yeah, we haven't had a City of Bell rep at any of the meetings for quite a while now, so I don't know exactly who the City of Bell rep is. Um, however, the City of Southgate years ago put the, uh, all their issues behind them thanks to Hector Delatorre, who later became an Assembly Member. And, uh, the big step was at Bob Hope Airport, joined the Orange Line Development Authority. So now, along with Santa Clarita, there's sort of a, a clear track from downtown LA to Glendale, Burbank, Bob Hope Airport, and then on to, uh, Santa Clarita. So that's what we're working on now. And the Executive Director actually researched and found a, I believe, a four-point-five-million-dollar grant that had been at the, uh, Bob Hope Airport, Burbank Airport Authority for, was it twenty years, Dave? I think, something like twenty years. He actually found that grant, and so now using that grant and some airport monies, they're going to work on a study that will try to link and have, do an analysis of the North Hollywood Red Line, the Orange Line that goes to North Hollywood, Bob Hope Airport. I think they're also going to try and include, uh, Glendale in the study, an east-west connection. So anyway, it is moving along, continues to, to move along. But yeah, let's take it off calendar. Tomorrow I'll mention, uh, I'll mention that verbiage.
So if there's no objections, uh, that's what we're going to do. Okay, uh, let's move on to the next item, please.
Next item is Oral Communications.
Thank you. I have several cards. This is the three-minute portion of oral communications for public announcements. Anna Rundle?
There's no prize for being first. I guess that's better than being last. My name's Anna Rundle, and I am a longtime member of the Glendale Library, Friends of the Library. And I know that almost every week you get to hear from Leon Mayer about what's happening. And Leon had the nerve to say he would rather go and look at the Grand Canyon. So I was not going to interfere with that. So you get me instead of, of Leon. And what we, what I'm going to give you tonight is all the events for September at the library, but specifically, of course, our authors and artist person is, you were just talking about the Bob Hope Airport. Well, we have more connections in Glendale than the airport with Bob Hope. He was here for the opening, reopening of the Alex Theater quite a few years ago, and has, has been certainly part of the Glendale history. And he's no longer with us, so you're not going to get to see Bob Hope. But one of his gag writers, whose name is Bob Mills, has written a book, and the book is called The Laugh Makers. And he is going to be here and at the Glendale Library, Central Library, on Wednesday, so there's no excuse for any of you not coming. We don't do these things on Tuesday if we don't have to. And, uh, it's, it's at seven o'clock, and he will be talking about what it was like to write jokes for Bob Hope. I think most of the, of the gag writers have always believed that they were the ones that were funny, and Bob Hope was just there doing his thing. And, and I will leave some of these September events for you. Any questions about that? Thanks.
Thank you. Doris Tweet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Doris Tweet, and I'm here on behalf of the Days of the Verdugo's Heritage Association, who invites you and the community to our Fiesta Cita this Sunday, September 12th, at the, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM on the grounds of the Casa Adobe de San Rafael, 1330 Dorothy Drive. The Fiesta Cita is held annually to raise funds to support the efforts of the DOV in preserving and maintaining the Verdugo Adobe, which is in the Verdugo Woodlands, uh, which is a registered California historic landmark. Funds collected enable the DOV to provide educational tours, brochures, and historic items for the museum. We also subsidize transportation for students who come and tour the Adobe, and we have games and different things to entertain them. A Mexican dinner will be served. Margaritas and other beverages will be available. There will be music, opportunity drawings, and a silent auction, and the tickets are twenty dollars for adults and ten for children, and, well, children six to twelve, and children under five are free. Uh, so we hope you can make it on Sunday, three, between three and six, and you can call me at 818-248-7109 for a reservation. And we, there's also another event on Friday, this coming Friday, at the Casa Adobe, the Glendale Beautiful's Annual Fall Dinner, and we hope you can make that. Tickets are also twenty dollars for that, and the dinner will be provided by San Marino Catering, and there'll be musical entertainment by Jim Johnson, and you can also call me for that if you'd like a reservation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anahit Penejan?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Najarian, the members of the City Council, the staff and the audience. My name is Anahit Penejan. The completion of the construction of the Mother Cathedral of the Western Diocese of the Armenian Church of North America at 3325 North Glenox in Burbank, this Saturday, September 11th, at 3:00 PM, there will be a special celebration, the blessings and consecration of the Mother Church. His Holiness Kharikins II will consecrate this Mother Church with all the solemnity and the rites of the Armenian Church. In the ceremonies, several clergymen from Armenia, Europe, Canada, Middle East will participate, as well as several participate, political, uh, political civic and community leaders, including the Honorable Antonio Villorgosa, the mayor of the Los Angeles, congressman, and other government officials. At the same day, his Holiness will consecrate the stone cross dedicated to the innocent victims who have been killed by terrorist attack on 9/11 in New York with a regal service. By placing the stone cross, this innocent victim will always remain alive and honored in the collective consciousness of Armenian-American citizen. The next day, Sunday, September 12th, in the evening at 5:00 PM, a celebrity gala banquet will be held at the Universal Hilton Hotel at 5:00 PM. It is our sincere wish to see you, to participate in the opening of the doors of the new cathedral. I hope to see you, all of you, in this, uh, celebrity evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Tribetts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Glenn Tribetts. I'm the recently-elected president of the Glendale Symphony, and I'm also the president of the Hollywood Piano Company, and we have for years supported the symphony, and they finally asked me if I would take over the job as president. Um, I'm very excited. We have a whole new direction for the symphony, and we have a lot of exciting things, starting with this Saturday. We have a big event. The symphony will be back with, uh, about eleven members of our orchestra in an, an event that will honor the great Maestro Alors Chekhnevurian. Uh, now, Maestro Chekhnevurian, for those of you who don't know, for eleven years he was the conductor of the Armenian Philharmonic and, uh, brought that orchestra to international prominence. Uh, he's conducted London Symphony, London Philharmonic, Vienna Symphony, Vienna Philharmonic, Mexico Symphony, has conducted all over the world, and we're honoring him Saturday, and we're going to have a very exciting announcement Saturday as well about the maestro's involvement with the orchestra, uh, going forward. with the orchestra going forward. And he's here right now, so why don't you stand up and say hello, maestro? We're trying to put the symphony back on the map, and I mentioned to the mayor earlier today, you know, this is a city that doesn't have a major sports team. There's no major institution of higher learning, four-year college that represents the city of Glendale, but there is the Glendale Symphony. And for 86 years, the symphony has carried the name of this city wherever it's gone, and it's performed at the Hollywood Bowl, at the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion in Las Vegas, it accompanied the Three Tenors, it accompanied Pavarotti. Just recently, two years ago, the symphony was hired to accompany a great Japanese soprano. So what we're trying to do is revitalize this symphony, so once again it can travel all over and represent the city of Glendale, and we're hoping in the future to even see the symphony go internationally, representing the city of Glendale. So I'm hoping that we can get the support of the city and the council, and as you may know, there's a symphony in Burbank, which is supported by their city council, and there's a symphony in Pasadena, which is supported by their city council. So I'm hoping going forward, we can bring in the city council and be part of what we're doing. We'd like you all to join us Saturday night if you can, as our guests, and there's some flyers, and they'll pass them out to all of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Glenn, and that's Saturday, September 11th, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., at the Lexus of Glendale dealership. Very good. Thank you very much, and nice to see you in town, maestro. I don't have any other cards for oral communications. This section will be closed. Let's move on to the next item.
Item 8A is Director of, under Action Items, is Director of Human Resources Regarding Proposed Ordinance of the City of Glendale Providing for a Salary Supplement in Continuation of Certain Benefits for City Employees Who Are Members of National Guard or Armed Forces, Reserves, and Are Called Up for Active Duty. At 8A1 is an ordinance for introduction.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we don't have any cards.
We do this every year for our military, people that are serving, so I'd like to introduce the ordinance at 8A1.
Thank you. It is introduced. Next item, please.
At 8B is Director of Information Services Regarding Emergency Purchase Order to Provide Backup Hardware, Software, and Implementation Services to Support the Advanced Metering Infrastructure AMI Smart Grid Project. At B1 is Motion Ratifying City Manager's Execution of a Purchase Order to, I'm sorry if I don't know how to pronounce this, but Agilisys Technology Solutions Group LLC for
Okay, does anyone request a report on that? Backup system for our smart metering?
No.
Grid?
Nothing.
Is there any discussion or a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I don't have any cards. Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Next item?
8C is Director of Information Services Regarding Amendment to Agreement with Agilisys to Provide 24/7 Support for the AMI Smart Grid Backhaul and to the City IT Network. At C1 is Motion Authorizing City Manager to Execute Amendment 9 to the Agreement with Agilisys Technology Solutions Group LLC in Mount Nautic seed $1,924,906, and at C2 is a resolution appropriating $120,000.
Are there any questions on this? This is for technical support. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move 8C 1 and 2.
Second.
Are there any cards, Mr. Kusak?
No, not on this item.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
You?
Okay, oral communication? Mr. Mayor and council, the next item is oral communications, and this is the five-minute portion where the place where discussion is limited at times, not part of this agenda. About five minutes, council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. A city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Thank you.
Wait for the team.
We moved it fast tonight.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, Harold Scoggins, Fire Chief. We come before you tonight for a very important reason. We'd like to talk to you a little bit about the 9/11 commemoration that's going on this weekend, and what we're doing here in the Glendale Fire Department to never forget the firefighters who've lost their lives on that tragic day in American history. Every year, annually, over 100 firefighters lose their lives in the line of duty, and you don't hear a lot about it because they're usually single events or two or three firefighters losing their lives all over the country, but this event stopped the watches for all of us. So one of the things that we did here in the Glendale Fire Department in partnership with the Glendale Firefighters Association is had an idea and came up with a way that we can actually honor those who lost their lives on that day. Many of you have seen 343, We'll Never Forget, that's the number of firefighters who died that day. It's pretty important to note that those firefighters knew that day, when they went into the towers, that they probably wouldn't be coming out if you have heard any of them speak since the day of that event. So what the firefighters here in Glendale came up with, and we've changed our uniform policy for a week to do this, is made a T-shirt to honor them, and on the front of the T-shirt, in the center of the Maltese cross is 343, We'll Never Forget, with the United States flag behind it, and on the back of the shirt, there's the United States flag also. On Saturday morning at 6:58, all of our firefighters, no matter where they are, whether they're working or not, will pause for a moment in time to remember the firefighters who lost their lives that day. It's a really important event for us and we know for the rest of the country, so we're going to ask the community to pause at 6:58 on Saturday morning, 9/11, no matter where you are or what you're doing. The significance of that, that's the time the plane hit the first tower. For the last nine years, we have been going out to our flagpoles at every one of our fire stations and gathering as individual stations, and we've been doing a few things. We say a prayer for the firefighters who have lost their lives, we say a prayer for their families, and we say a prayer for the communities that they serve. This is a really important moment for us, and we ask the community to join in on Saturday morning at 6:58 a.m. to just pause for a moment in time, whether you have to set your alarm clocks, your BlackBerrys, your iPhones, whatever you may have. And for the city council, we've passed out some shirts to you, and we would ask that you and the city manager and the assistant city manager and the city clerk, we would ask that you wear these for a portion of the day on Saturday morning, just as a reminder of this tragic day that's marked in American history.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, gentlemen. We will be sure to do that. Next speaker, Richard Eveson.
City Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council and members of the city staff. My name is Richard Euson. I'm a resident of the city and have been for about 10 years. Two weeks ago, Councilman Weaver alluded to my letter that was printed in the Glendale news press. In that letter, I objected to the proposed rate hike from Glendale Water and Power. In his remarks, Councilman Weaver asserted that I said that the proposed rate hike was due to bloated pensions, which he then dismissed as misguided and inaccurate. In fact, in my letter, I did not assert any such thing. Rather, I asked a series of questions, since in their letter, the G W P did not spell out what their expenses and debt obligations consisted of. So I asked if these might include bloated pensions or transfers of funds from G W P's account to the city's general fund. I think these are reasonable questions. I also think many, if not most, of the ratepayers in the city will agree with me. That was two weeks ago. I have yet to hear any answers to these questions from Councilman Weaver or anyone else. I understand that G W P is transferring $4.5 million from its fund to the city's general fund this year. Is that correct? And if so, is that legal? Would G W P's proposed rate hike be necessary if the funds were not depleted by this amount? When will the city attorney report back to this council and to the residents of the city about the legality of this transfer? Again, these are questions I think we, the ratepayers, deserve answers to before G W P or this council asks us to meekly accept a rate increase. Speaking for myself, I'm tired of the ratchet only working one way, increase my utility costs and increase revenues to the city's water and power monopoly. Unless and until we get answers to these questions, I will continue to encourage residents in the city to write and protest this proposed rate hike. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wayne Semenoff?
Good evening, Your Honor, Mayor, and the City Council members. Do you have a packet that I brought to distribute?
Go ahead and start.
Well, basically, the reason I'm here is the city has $335,000 in unclaimed funds that has been sitting dormant for about 25 years in old court cases. And what my company does is I locate these funds, I provide them to the city at no cost to them, I get paid out of the funds I recover, and I deliver the funds to the cities. And as you see on the top letter, there's the City of Industry, who I just recovered about a half a million dollars for, and then the City of Pomona on the next page, and behind that is a check that I just delivered to them last week for $305,000. And there's approximately that amount that's due to your city, and I would like to help the city get the funds out of the courts, and that's the reason I came. And I attached my proposal to the back of the letter, and I've done this successfully for about 30 years now, and I, the best part of it is that you don't have to pay anything to get the money. You just authorize me to go forward, I get the funds, I get a fee out of the funds I recover, and then the balance is sent over to the city. So it's like getting something for nothing. That's basically it.
Okay, thank you.
You have any questions?
We can address you at the end of the oral communications portion. Thank you very much. We'll make sure this does get on to the city attorney.
Thank you.
Councilman, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a resident of Glendale. Last time I was here, a councilperson indicated they were deeply disturbed by a suggestion that they thought advocated the city act illegally. That's the appropriate response to such a suggestion. But after that, I got up and made the case that the city currently is acting illegally, that by transferring over $4 million annually of water fees to the general fund, it's violating the Supreme Law of the State, the state constitution. Now, that case rested on four simple pillars. One, this city as a charter city, it rises authority to impose those fees and transfer some of them from their charter. The people by initiative added Article 13D to the California Constitution, which by its very terms indicates that its provisions apply to all fees imposed by local governmental charter, and surely, the Glendale Charter can't trump the California Constitution. Those are the two pillars. The third pillar is the following. Article 13D of the California Constitution places a limitation and a prohibition on fees imposed for services that are property-related. It limits those fees to the use of the service for which they were collected, and it prohibits their use for general services, the kind of services supported by the general fund. The fourth pillar of that case is that in 2006, the California Supreme Court determined that water services are property-related within the meaning of Article 13D of the Constitution, so consequently, its prohibition and limitation would apply to water fees. But in spite of the fact that the California Supreme Court so decided, the city continues to transfer water fees to the general fund, by violating the limitation that they'd only use for the service for which they are collected, and the prohibition that they not be used for general services. Now, was anybody on the council deeply disturbed by my making the case that in fact the city has been acting illegally and has been violating the Constitution? Certainly, I wouldn't judge that they were by the reaction. Nobody spoke about the case that I made. Nobody cared enough to turn to the city attorney and say, somebody has made a public case, a serious case, that they're engaged in illegal activity. Is there anything incorrect about the four pillars upon which his case stands? And if so, what are they? And if not, how can we reconcile the limitation and prohibition of Article 13D with our conduct of transferring these fees to the general fund? Does any councilman tonight care enough to ask that question publicly to the city attorney? Those of you that are watching out there, do you care? Do you care enough to say to your councilmen, a serious case has been made that the city is acting illegally? That accusation deserves an equally public, an equally serious response. Do you care enough to write to the news press, who's refused to publish two letters that I've submitted to the forum on this very issue, and when they told me they refused to do it, they allowed as maybe sometime in the future they might write a news article on it? You care enough to write to the news press and say, a serious question has been asked that deserves coverage in your pages? Do any of us care? Are all of us so cynical and so apathetic about government that a strong case is made, our city government is acting illegally to the tune of millions of dollars a year, and yet we're met with silence? Does anybody care? Does anybody care?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. Number one, I want to say, when I was here last week, there was an accusation made against me, and I thought it was both rude and unfair. I wasn't allowed to answer, because we're not allowed to answer after oral is over. I'm referring to Mayor Najarian's contention that I influenced or spoke to the man that sat next to me, which I have no control as to who sits next to me. All kinds of people sit next to me. As a matter of fact, I tried to influence the man to be careful about what he said, that he made sure that his facts were right. And I know the mayor referred to me as the lady that sat next to him, and then Mr. Weaver decided to say, do you mean Margaret Hammond? Now, I don't know whether he just wanted to bring my name into it, or whether he was referring to the fact that maybe I wasn't a lady. And I, yeah, sure. Okay, there were other people that asked me why that came up. And the next thing is that next Monday, at the Boy Scout Hall, we are going to be having our Glendale Coordinating Council meeting, and the G W P is going to be there, and anybody that's interested, the homeowners, everybody, come and hear what they have to say, and you will have a chance to speak too, give your opinion and so forth. So do come, 7 o'clock at the Boy Scout Hall up on, what is it, Glenmount, whatever? Huh? Grandview? Grandview. All right, so much for that. And you know, in Glendale, we have at least 50% of the entire population are below Colorado, and I don't think that we'd really have, get a fair share of our services. Our area has suffered increased problems recently, as far as graffiti, break-ins, and other problems, vandalism and so forth. And we do not get the police patrols and so forth that we should be getting. And I'm just saying, it's no reason why we shouldn't have our services, the same as the rest of the city. And since we are adjacent, not that it's the city of Glendale's fault, but we are adjacent to a problem area of Los Angeles, or whatever you want to, that area that is close to our borders, and we do get a lot of overflow from them. So we do need to have a little more vigilance on the part of our police department. And then, one last thing I have asked for before, is the photos of the former mayors, who, these citizens gave their time, they volunteered their energy, and made our city a wonderful city to live in. I mean, you have to admit, you guys do a great job on trying to keep our city a quality city, that our quality of life is kept up. And I know they did. They worked hard. I knew many of them, 50 years I've been here. So I know a lot of people that've served on the city, and I do think that their photos should be displayed, absolutely. And also, as your photo will be displayed, I hope, and when you have served your term. The other thing is, the beautiful seal that was on the back wall was colored, and I thought it was really beautiful, and I think it was given to us as a handmade gift from one of our sister cities. I can't quite remember, I keep meaning to have someone look up that information, but I remember that it had a history, and it was a very beautiful piece of artwork of our seal of our city. And I do feel that it should be displayed, and it really, when it was shown on TV, it really showed up very well. And I'm not saying this isn't beautiful, but I don't think this particular model shows up as well as that one did in the colors. I mean, again, that's my opinion, which, you know, I'm always willing to give my opinion, whether you ask for it or not, so thank you very much for that. And again, as to family dinners, as I said, we had dinners that were very, were very poor, a lot of potatoes. It was during the Depression, remember? Anytime from 1929, I had family. And what I'm saying is that we did have dinner every night, and I do think it is important. There was no fast food, there was no, didn't have any money for that kind of thing. You were lucky just to have potatoes and a lot of times for dinner, and being Irish, and the meat was hopefully what we could afford. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me first go to Mr. Howard, with regard specifically to the
Proposition 218 issue and the water transfer from Mr. Zavos. And first, I want to say that I have tremendous respect for, I'll call him Harry. He and I, despite the numerous email exchanges and the personal telephone contact that we've had involving this issue, I think what he's really looking for is some public announcement related to the issue that he continues to raise, again, despite our many conversations. And so let me repeat publicly what I've stated to him privately. Mr. Zavos raises a good issue. It's an issue that we've been looking at since the Big Horn case in 2006, and that we have redoubled our efforts, along with the Finance Department and G W P, to look at extremely closely, to ensure that we are not violating the Supreme Law of the State of California, and that's the state constitution, Article 13D thereof. Mr. Zavos is aware of the steps we are taking to do that. I've indicated to him that we will have a decision within the next couple of months, at the latest, and we are going to be reporting back to the city council on the status of that transfer. I've also indicated to him we've had essentially not only a practical debate about it, but also a legal debate, about the implications of Article 13D superseding the mandatory provisions of our city charter that was enacted by the voters and voted on, not once, but twice, prior to Article 13D being enacted by initiative. Be that and the fact that there are no cases that interpret a city charter which is Be that and the fact that there are no cases that interpret a city charter which is mandatory, such as ours. There is one interpreting a discretionary provision in Los Angeles's city charter, and there's also a case involving the city of Fresno, where the city of Fresno, after Proposition 218 was enacted, adopted a charter provision for, what they call an in-lu fee, or an in-lu transfer. But there is no case interpreting the mandatory provisions of our city charter. Notwithstanding that, my assurances to Mr. Zavos, as Ben and I'm stating it publicly to anyone who is tuning in or would care to tune in, is that we take his concerns seriously, and we are looking at it very, very carefully, and intend to provide this council with a detailed public report about the status of that transfer vis-à-vis Proposition 218.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver?
Yes, on the same issue, twice here I've explained the water rates to some degree. I'll try to do it a third time. Hopefully, more people will catch it. The MWD has a reduced amount of water available based on the demand of people living in an arid district called Southern California, and the supply is dwindling. Snow melt is down, et cetera, so there's less water to go around. The MWD told this city, amongst others, "You shall reduce your water usage in acre-footage, or we will penalize you." Glendale took it seriously and put in water measures to reduce that. When the acre-foot of water is reduced in the city, the dollar value revenue generated by the residents and commercial is likewise reduced. However, the operations of the city continue in replacement of water lines, et cetera, and upgrades. The Metropolitan Water District said if we did not reduce to the level they specified to us, they would fine us. That fine would have amounted to about $8 million. Repeat, approximately $8 million fine for not going down to the mandatory level that they set. Now, I'm not speaking to the transfer, that's a legal issue, but I'm talking to the requirement that we not pay a penalty of $8 million, twice the amount that we transferred. As far as transferring the money, I do believe in my own mind. You transfer money over and it has to be used for the purpose of the water lines or the water usage. When we tear up a street like we have just done recently to Duran, we have upgraded the water lines in the street. So we have torn up the streets that Public Works has to repair. That repair costs money. So monies, I'm not saying all of it, but at least some of the money that goes over to the general fund is paying for the replacement of streets and other structures that the water lines caused by their upgrades. As far as publicly not asking publicly, what are we doing about the Section 218? Most times, I do not ask those questions publicly on TV. I did speak with Mr. Howard after the first time Mr. Zavos spoke, and he told me they were going to be investigating. And I've talked to him different times, and he has said he has talked to you and explained everything he's doing. That would be a matter of maybe two or three months, the time I asked. And I says, "Okay," because I know the public's going to want to know. And he said he'd been telling you. So to stand here tonight and ask us, you know, "Don't we care? Didn't we ask?" Well, I'm sure my colleagues probably did too. So you get the answer when the answer is done. It's not a pretty thing to have to raise rates, but water is a dwindling resource in this region, and will continue to get worse. I suspect that the MWD will be back to us in the future, someday, telling us to reduce it even further. We better hope that we can dig more wells, like up at Rock Haven, to be able to pump more water out, that we can treat the chromium VI we have in water, so we can use more groundwater to help supplement, so we don't have to pay too big a penalty if we get caught in that trap. I hope that explains it a third time. I hope I answered, I didn't mean to insult on anybody. And Margaret, don't read comments, things into comments I make, because you're a lady. And I remember the first time you came into these chambers years ago, and I says, "You ought to come back again." You took me at my word, and you've been back every Tuesday since, except when you're on vacation.
Mr. Howard, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, well, not so much on that. I think I've stated what I think was necessary relative to the application of Article 13D and the water transfer and what we're doing. But I want to respond to Mr. Semenoff and his request that we look at unclaimed funds before Mr. Garcia relieves me. We will take a look at it and determine the validity of the services. Obviously, on paper, he seems to be pretty good, but I must note, and this certainly doesn't apply to Mr. Semenoff, because I don't, he may have been in business, we were not aware of him. We did have a firm that we retained many years ago, at least a dozen years ago, to obtain funds through the courts that had been left, and they were primarily eminent domain deposits, so we're on file. Ultimately, that resulted in a lawsuit against the recovery firm, as well as a court clerk who essentially defrauded the city. And I'm not saying that's going to happen here at all. I want to make it very, very, very clear. But just to let you know that we've looked at these firms in the past, many of them are legitimate and do an excellent job. So we want to make sure that we're just very cautious before we take a step in that direction. But I want to assure you that we'll look at it very closely and carefully, and we'll make contact with Mr. Semenoff.
Thank you.
Sure. Well, the city manager mentions, I'll start with what he was just talking about. No, by my calculations, if the gentleman, if the gentleman is correct in his recovery fees, it doesn't cost us anything, but keep in mind, folks, he's talking about a recovery fee. And if we act now—
Thirty-eight percent.
Then it's, you know, 38% rather than the usual 45%. I mean, you're looking at $114,000 of a supposed $300,000 that's out there. So our $300,000 then becomes $186,000. In any case, I'm happy we're going to look into, into the proposal, but anyway, I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that. The other issue I just want to address has to do with Mr. Zavos. Mr. Zavos, I, or Professor Zavos, I think all of us up here are well aware that you've been in discussions with Mr., with our city attorney. You've stopped some of us individually after meetings to talk to us about this. I know you have me on at least one occasion. I've read your emails. I have responded to one of your emails, even to the point of responding to one of your emails, not only to tell you what my feeling is on all of this as an elected official and as a citizen, but also even to mention a typo in your letter to the editor. In any case, to ask, "Do we care"? Well, yes, I do care. But whether I care or don't care doesn't have anything to do with what I sit up here and ask on this topic. You state that the city is acting illegally. That's your opinion. And we have a city attorney who disagrees with your opinion. So I believe all we can do here is ask the question. Mr. Howard seems to have stepped out, and an impostor is sitting in his chair now. But all we can do is ask him that question. You know, are we taking the appropriate steps to make sure that this is looked at? And are we communicating with Mr. Zavos? I've been told we are. And I've been told that the issue is coming back to us. So I'm also told that you're aware of that. So standing here saying to us, "Do we care?", looking up at the camera and saying, "Does anyone out there care?", I just think is over the top, sir. But do know, in any case, you know, I take you at your word, I do care. I know all of my colleagues care. I know the city, the city staff cares. We're trying to get you an answer, and I'm sure we will. It's been promised. And believe me, if, if the city attorney doesn't come through, then another hook will come out of that door and yank him back there, and some other impostor will be in that chair. But in all seriousness, we are looking at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Not to belabor the, the water point, but I do thank the gentleman for coming in who wrote the letter. I don't think I've seen you before, seen you here before, so welcome. I don't want, one of the things that you said struck me, which was that you hadn't gotten an answer. And I'm sure it's true that you haven't gotten a direct, personal answer in response to your email, or sorry, to your letter to the editor in the paper. But we've had many public meetings here about water rates, about why they are what they are. We've had many hours of publicly accessible and where the public's been invited to participate and speak, meetings not only with GWP, but also a joint meeting with the Water and Power Commission, where we all sat up here together. So there's been quite a lot of answers to your questions given in the public. You may not have caught them on the day that they were on or when they were repeated, but it doesn't mean that we haven't been addressing those issues. I can tell you that I don't understand how, how the city cannot raise rates when the place that we buy our water from, the Metropolitan Water District, has raised, within the last nine years, raised the city's rates that we pay for the water that we then give to the citizens, about 75%. And we haven't had a rate increase in those years. And now they're proposing a 3% rate increase. 3%, when Metropolitans raising our rates that we buy the water for 7.5% this year and an additional 7.5% next year for a total of 15%. So we may be proposing a rate increase, which we haven't decided on yet, but we're in a way subsidizing the rate increase that we are purchasing the water for. So we're not passing along that total increase rate, we're absorbing that within GWP. Whereas most cities that I know, Los Angeles, Burbank, Pasadena, are raising their rates into the double digits, 12%, 13%, 14%. And yet here, they're proposing only a 3% rate increase. And I'm not even sure how they're doing it, except to cut back on services. And in terms of the transfer, I'm not an attorney, I don't know whether the new legislation makes it illegal. I know that when we get our report back from the city attorney, I know his reports, so I know it's going to be very well researched, very long, with a lot of legal details. But I do know that the voters have twice affirmed that transfer. And I'm told, and I wasn't, I'm told this because I wasn't here then, it was many years ago, that when GWP first started, part of the reason that the voters went for it was that it was supposed to be a revenue source for the general fund. So that was the original concept under which it was set up, and our charter requires a transfer. It doesn't just suggest it or make it discretionary, it's required. So for me to just say, "Well, a few people have called this into concern," so I don't feel that I can just overrule what the voters have affirmed, not just once, but twice. I think we need to see a very strong reason why legally it can't be done, because we'd be going against the will of the voters. So I need to, so for me, I need to see that report, I need to have it vetted. It's going to be, as Mr. Zavos knows, a sort of a big schmeggy, as my people say. And we're waiting to get that back. And it will be done publicly, and the public will hear about it. And I think that this legislation is evolving and changing. I mean, it's very sort of current and up to, you know, up to the moment, and these cases are still working their way through the court system, so it's an evolving area. And I, believe me, there's nobody here trying to pull a fast one on the public. If anything, the rules have changed around what has been established practice here for many years, and we're trying to play catch-up. So that's my perspective on that. And then, just in terms of Ms. Hammond's contention that the city's ignoring the south part of Glendale, I really don't believe that to be true. I, I don't think that we're keeping cops off the road in the south part of the city so that we can put them somewhere else for some nefarious reasons. I, I don't, unfortunately, the police chief isn't here. I'm sure that he could get to you and tell you what the strategy is, how many police are on patrol at all times. I know that it's hard for them to cover a city of this size, and they do the best they can. Since I've been on this council about a year and a half, the vast majority of new programs that I've seen come through the city council have been in the south part of the city. I can't remember being here at a time when anything north of the 134 in terms of a new park or a new amenity has, I mean, I might be forgetting something, but it's constantly, you know, parks in the south part, just last week, the Maryland, the New Maryland Mini Park, the two community gardens which are on Monterey. So I guess they straddle that north-south, you know, border. Cedar Park, we have Griffith Manor, which is kind of, I guess, not really north or south, it's more west. But, you know, I've seen more done, and my colleagues are throwing out names to me of projects. Pacific Park, we have the swimming pool coming online in Pacific Park.
Adult Recreation Center.
The Adult Recreation Center, all of the projects being done around there. What was the—
Museum.
Museum of Neon Art. There's a lot, a lot going on in the south of the city. The library. Well, you get the idea. There's been a lot of activity in the south. I don't think the south is being ignored by any stretch of the imagination, and it'll keep getting nicer and nicer. It's a nice place now.
On the issue of the utility transfers, you know, I just find it amazing that we keep hearing it from a very small group of people, but we keep hearing it. I mean, when you look at the history of this city and other cities, Burbank, Pasadena, all the ones with what are called municipal utilities, it's obvious that the city councils that were duly formed and constituted when this city was incorporated, the idea was to have a, I probably didn't use that, would you mind keeping it down? The city councils at that period may not have used the term, but I mean, this was an enterprise, an enterprise zone. So the idea that you have a Glendale Water and Power with the ability to transfer money to the general fund, somehow that is prohibited, that it has to stay in that little pile, that doesn't make any sense. We do lots of things in this city that where we don't make any money. Public Works may make some money in terms of collecting garbage and doing some of the things that Public Works does. The other sections of Public Works, there's no money, we don't charge people to use our roads. So I mean, I'd look at this city and just like every other city in the, in the country, I mean, you look at the whole. You look at the organic city and the services that it provides. Some portions of the city government collects fees, others don't, and it all balances out at the end. So this never-ending, the transfer and the illegal and the, I mean, it's just ridiculous, quite frankly. It's been going on for years and years, and I just don't understand it. Glendale Water and Power is one of the most efficient utilities in California, as I travel throughout the state. It's by far one of the most efficient utilities. We're continually hitting our green, our green energy goals and surpassing them, far surpassing other municipalities. I guess you have to have something to talk about, you have to have something to complain about, so that's one of them. But it just doesn't make any sense to me at all. I just absolutely don't understand it. But that's my opinion, and others have, have a different opinion. And one more thing, by the way, those cities that don't have municipal utilities that have to rely on, on either Southern California Edison or PG&E, boy, are they in, in a heck of a bind. They're absolutely in a bind when you have the quote, "Investor utilities" that provide service to, to the individual cities. That's it.
Thank you. I do care, Mr. Zavos. My concerns were relayed to Mr. Howard, and I thought it best that the, that the answer come once, come as a full and complete answer to your, to the allegations, rather than have them dribble out as they proceed. I was pretty mad last week, and I didn't want to call your name out, and I didn't call your name out, and the camera wasn't on you. So I didn't say that lady, Margaret Hammond, is a bad lady because she's sitting next to that bad man. So I tried to restrain myself, but I was pretty angry. I was angry at what he had, had said, and the hate that he had spewed out, but it's just that you were, you're always so friendly and you, you know, I just was mad. So I apologize if I directly accused you of—
That's Margaret's attorney calling you right now. I wouldn't answer it either.
So I agree with the comments on the, the water rates. It is a complicated issue, and it's— It is a complicated issue, and it's unfortunately not as, not as simple as, as some in the newspaper, some who have written to the newspaper have, have made it out to be. And thank you to Chief Scoggins and the firefighters. We will take a moment of silence on 6:58 on Saturday morning. Are there any other questions, comments?
Who've we adjourned?
Or second?
Second.
We're adjourned.